States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Okay. I think I'm well told.
Oh, yeah.
Good?
Yeah. Okay, call a regular council meeting to order to certify a quorum. We've got a quorum with Reggie and John are missing.
John's running late, but he will be here, you said.
Okay, good. We have a visitor, Shawna McCullough, Office of Emergency Management of Pulaski County. It's our first speaking.
You have some information for you here. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dana?
Thanks.
We have your resume.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Nina, would you like to talk?
Yes. Edna needs one.
I'll have him send this to me.
All right, so my name is Shawna McCullough. I'm the County Emergency Management Director. I took the position beginning of the year, so I'm slowly making my way through the cities and introducing myself. So this is me. I'm here to support all of our emergency services in the county, and one of the ways that I'd like to do that is by establishing a mass notification system. Before you, I put together a nice packet here. There's a lot of information to go over. I don't expect you to be able to look over it all today, but I would like for you to go through it, and if you have any other questions past the day, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you. Basically, what I would like to see happen for the county as a whole is for all of our cities with our county, come in together and do like a cost share on a mass notification system. Most of our cities and our county, we do not have this for our citizens of the county, so...
No, it's a county, but it's a city.
Correct. Other cities, though, do not. I know that you all have a provider that you may or may not utilize. I know Waynesville City has a provider that they use, but what I would like to see is continuity throughout the county. It makes it easier for myself to work for the county, and then with new things happening between the city of St. Robert and Waynesville, I believe that it would create additional continuity between those two when it comes to emergency services. So basically, on the top page here, I put together some key points that I really, really liked about this particular provider. I have reviewed two other providers, but this is the one that I felt was offered the most for what we were going to pay. Each city is going, could have their own... What's the word I'm looking for? Your own subscriber. So myself as the county, I would be able to reach the county as a whole, but each city can have their own admins. There's unlimited users to this, so each city can reach their own subscribers. It won't go out to... What you send out to the city of St. Robert's subscribers will not go out to other county members. You can use internal communications, external communications. This isn't just good for weather alerts, but this is also good for things that you do within the city, whether it's a city event, or maybe you have some... A storm comes through and you have... We have some people that may have damage. They can... We can send out a notification that people can respond to. So one, we have damage; two, we don't have damage, and they can send that back in, and then that helps emergency services figure out where they need to go. Same if they need help. If there's really been a big storm come through and we've had, you know, major tornado damage, things like that, and we can send out a mass notification asking, you know, who is safe and who needs assistance. And that, again, will help emergency services get to our citizens much faster than if we were just trying to guess where our biggest issue might be. These... This system, you can integrate straight to your social media, so if you put a message out, it'll automatically link to your social media and send a message out that way also. This is also the only provider that will link to Alexa. So we all know that landlines are becoming few and far between, so hooking up to Alexa allows for the system to be inside more homes. This is great for, let's say, you have a couple kids that might be home after school, home alone for a few hours before the parents get home. Tornado alert goes out and they just ignore it on their phone, while now Alexa is automatically talking to them in the home, telling them to take shelter. Same with any other notification that you need to put out. What I also like about this particular one is, say we have an incident on I-44, it's a hazmat incident, and we need to... Everybody within a five-mile radius needs to shelter in place. This system will allow that to happen. Anybody within that radius will be notified, shelter in place. You can include instructions on how to do so. You can also send out, you know, when it's all clear. Maybe we've got a wind gust and we need to draw a specific shape, so the wind is blowing south, so we have to... Everybody south needs to shelter in place. We can draw that shape, and those people will receive those notifications. If there is no internet, we have the option to use a landline and record our message, and then those calls will go out for people to listen to. They also utilize Google Translate, so there are options for multiple languages, to hear those messages in multiple languages. Other things that I really liked were all the maintenance updates, 24-hour support come along in the cost. Hyperreach helps us campaign for signups. They guarantee a 20% increase in subscribers, so they don't just sell you the system and then say, "All right, figure it out." They offer all kinds of training and things like that to help us along with making sure that we're utilizing it to our max capacity and we're affecting the most people and their life safety. We can send these messages out through a phone app, or a computer, or a landline. They offer different ways to sign up. So, you know, Grandma and Grandpa don't have that cellphone, that smartphone, that computer. They have options to fill out actual paper documents and get those sent in, so that way they're getting... If they have that landline, they're getting that phone call for those emergency notifications. In a nutshell, that is really it. Again, these... You can have unlimited notifications, so if you want to set it up in internal communications within the city for your public works department, or your... You know, if you have a road closure, they can go in there and say, "Hey, we've got this road down." It goes down to the... You have a street that has a boil order, but it's only the odd numbers. It's detailed as that. Only the odd-numbered houses will get that notification, if that's what you desire. So it's very versatile. The subscribers can go in and set things up to exactly what they want. So if they want to receive a text or an email, that's what they get. If they want to receive a text or a phone call, that's what they get. If they want to receive tornado and thunderstorm, that's what they get. So that way, they're not being inundated with messages in ways that they don't want to receive them, or messages that they just don't want to receive at all. They can do that. However, when it comes to a tornado warning, I can go in and override that as the county admin, which for life-safety purposes, I feel that that's a good thing to be able to have. But I'm not going to go in and override things that, you know, that don't need to be... That are important. But when that comes to something like that, that is a capability. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Are there any questions? I hope I didn't go too fast.
What's the total cost for the county?
For the total cost or what the cost share would be?
Total cost for the county.
The total cost is $12,500. Then everybody, if we... If every city plus the county goes into cost share, it's just over $2,000 for the year.
So what's each city's contribution?
2,000... Approximately $2,083.
Okay, times five.
Five cities plus the county, sir.
What about 911, ambulance district, all those other ones that got messages?
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Ambulance district, 911, all those other agencies that use a notification system. Why aren't they involved?
Well, so PCAD, I don't foresee a reason why they would be sending out messages. 911, I suppose we could get them in on it. If they needed to send out messages, that would be...
Yeah, we'd pay them hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to do that.
So most of their notifications, they get from National Weather Service anyway, so anything... They're not going to get anything separate that I, as the county director, would not get.
Yeah, but you're not going to retire with the county.
I might as well be, sir.
Well, you're not.
I... The county is my priority.
Well, that's kind of stretching it, but... Okay, he's a big guy. You're not in a full-time position. Last I knew.
No, but if we have an emergency that's countywide, my priority is going to be doing what I need to do to protect the area and serve the area that is being affected.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions?
Real quick, if I may.
Sure.
Say, every city complied, decided to join this particular program that you presented today. My question is this: Would that leave our fire chief, meaning St. Robert's fire chief, in charge of this particular system as far as the overall admin, and then he could delegate from then or there forward on who has access and what messages can be sent out?
If that's what the city chooses to do. You have total authority over what the city chooses to do, so if you choose to make Chief Schember the leading admin over that, then that's perfectly fine.
Any other questions?
Is this like the most popular stuff out there, the most popular software or way to do this, or is this just one that you like?
It is one that I like, but it is very high-speed, for lack of better words. There's another county that just recently switched over to Hyperreach, and in speaking with that emergency management director, they also highly recommend it. In speaking with other counties around us who utilize other services, this is the one that I felt was top-notch.
I got a statement to make.
Yeah?
The taxpayers already pay Pulaski County taxes. As a government official, you want us to give $2,000, even though it's a small amount, into taxes that have already been paid by the citizens of St. Robert to support this particular program. And if the citizens have been taxed by the county, then the county should use those taxes and place it in their budget to purchase this system.
I'm not saying that I disagree with you. The OEM agency has not been a fully funded agency until probably about last year, so this was me simply trying to come together as a county as a whole to try to protect our citizens in the best way. I would like to see in the future the full amount budgeted, absolutely, and covered by the county. It's unfortunately not in my budget for this upcoming year, so this was me trying to problem solve.
Have you talked to the commissioners about it?
I have talked to our commissioner, and he liked the idea. It was a brief, very brief conversation that we had, because we were all going to go in together, the county sharing that cost also.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, ma'am.
So what kind of contract you going to do? How long is this going to run?
Well, to be honest with you, sir, I haven't thought that far forward, just simply for the fact, because I was trying to come together and figure out how everybody felt about it before I invested an extended amount of time in that. I would assume that we would do a...
Because when a city gives money, they have to have a contract for services, and that would have to be spelled out.
Yes, absolutely, and I would anticipate, you know, a yearly thing, a yearly contract, until we can...
Well, three-year, we'll read it a little bit, be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. We've got a treasurer's report approval minutes of September 20th and a proof payment of bills. Do you have treasurer's reports?
Yeah, we do.
Linda?
October 18th, 2022, treasurer's report payable checks in the amount of $794,404.72. 94% of that amount is in major vendor checks in the amount of $746,793.52. Payroll for October 14th, 2022 is $202,812.26. We have two monthly bond payments totaling $47,524.74. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments, $1,044,741.72.
And you got an air on here.
There is.
You got no archer engineer on there for $148,000.
Well, she added that later, I put that on there.
Yeah, okay. We got a check to sign. You're signing checks now.
What's the Hamilton property for Unentire Center?
That was the bond issue that we combined. I think it was like three bond issues we combined together.
Oh, okay.
Refinanced together.
Yeah.
And that's just what that payment score...
Well, you can't pay them all, because they ran them all together.
Right. The payment score.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, they'll get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Motion second.
Michael makes a motion. Charles seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Okay, the first agenda item is 4.1. We had a problem where people were dumping into the dumpsters when we took over, and we had no penalties or anything. Tice made an ordinance, $300 fine for using somebody else stealing a service.
Actually, Carrie did a little different, because we had... She went back to the code and found that we had prohibited this in our code. We just didn't have any penalty for it. So all we've done is add... She was right. All we need to do is add the $300 penalty to...
Get a range.
So, but anyway, she changed mine, but she's right, so...
Okay.
There were... In the code section, there are actually five things that were made unlawful, so this would be a penalty for any of those in case you need it. One of those is stealing use of a dumpster.
Okay.
To...
Okay, Rena, it's a bill, please.
I will point out, I see on the ordinance that I prepared, I need to change the date somehow. I put the 14th, which is the day I prepared it, so I will fix that to the 18th.
Okay.
Okay. Bill number 22-112, an ordinance amending city code section 220.070, solid waste management prohibited practices.
A motion on the first reading. Michael... Or John makes a motion. Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Second reading, please.
Bill number 22-112, an ordinance amending city code section 220.070, solid waste management prohibited practices.
A motion on the first reading. Michael... Or John makes a motion. Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Second reading, please.
Bill number 22-112, an ordinance amending city code section 220.070, solid waste management prohibited practices.
A motion on the second reading. Charles makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, 4.2 is approving change order to the Build Tech Construction LLC for the construction of concrete pads in the RV park. A motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Okay, 4.2 is approving change order to the Build Tech Construction LLC for the concrete pads. If you look on the pads documents, basically what we had, you can see on the first document where it has a 50-by-20 pad there. They had an engineer that doesn't work there anymore, the original design, and he had made 33-by-20, which wasn't even big enough for Anita's RV, which is a trailer.
Ours is 33 foot plus a duly, so it wasn't going to work.
So I caught that, and I got with Jeff, and he went back and redesigned. He came back with 50-by-20, and then I didn't see him, and they went over there and put rock so that they could get started, and they had it at a curve and all this other stuff, so I got ahold of Jeff again, and I got Jeff down. Steve and I took him out to the RV park at Fort Leonardwood and showed him what we're looking at. He came back with the new thing, because we had a falloff that goes down the hill. It's not that steep, and the pads have to be level when you put the RVs on them. So you can see the gray area around the white. The white areas are going to be grass, and then the concrete, and then the road. So it'll be finalized and all in there solid. And there's nine of them that'll get paved. I think he's got all 11 here, but there's only nine. We cut it back to cut the price down, and the price went up $20,000 from what he had just without ramps and all that kind of stuff. So it's a much better product. Steve even agreed. So that's what we're looking at. Any questions on that?
So it originally was going to cost $80,000?
Yeah, but the...
$84,000, and they're adding $114,000 onto that?
Yeah, because...
For the changes?
It was 33-by-20. Now these are 70-by-20 with ramps on the outsides, so you're getting about three times the amount of concrete you was getting before, seven-inch concrete.
It's been a long, long time.
I know. We're almost done on that.
Thank God.
Okay, Rena, it's a bill, please.
Yeah. Bill number 22-113, an ordinance approving change order number one to the contract with Build Tech Construction LLC for the construction of concrete pads in the RV park.
A motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion. Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ordinance, please.
Yes. Ordinance number 3924, an ordinance approving change order number one to the contract with Build Tech Construction LLC for the construction of concrete pads in the RV park.
A motion on the reading of the ordinance. Glenn makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Okay, 4.2 is a cable... And Cable America is the only company that's available in the local area that will do that. They were a sole source. Steve worked that out with them. We tried splashing them, but they don't have the range and didn't want to spend the money to set up and go all the way down there, so it was a sole source, so that's where we're at on that one. 4.3, Rena, it's a bill, please.
Bill number 22-114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Cable America to install a fiber optic line to the city of St. Robert's new wastewater treatment facility.
A motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
And Rita?
Okay, second reading.
Bill number 22-114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Cable America to install a fiber optic line to the city of St. Robert's new wastewater treatment facility.
A motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion. Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, we're on 4.4. This is the change order for Highway Y intersection, St. Robert Boulevard. Remember that we're not paying. They just passed paperwork through us. The Transportation District and Bo Dot are funding this, unless it goes over $350,000 for the Transportation District, which it should. But this change order, I guess Anita knows what the change order is. It's a sidewalk or something on the edge or finish nothing.
Do both.
It's a sidewalk or something on the edge.
Yes.
Okay, read 4.4 as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-115, an ordinance approving change order number two with Donald Magai Incorporated for Highway Y Intersection Improvement Project number J5S3312.
A motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Yes.
Bill number 22-115, an ordinance approving change order number two with Donald Magai
Incorporated for Highway Y Intersection Improvement Project number J5S3312.
A motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
Discussion. Yes.
My guy wants a 20-day extension to finish the completion of this project, and I just wanted to point it out, they procrastinated for four months before they ever got started, and they should be admonished for complacency in this construction, and that's all I got to see about it.
Okay. Okay. We got a motion, a second, call, roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-115, an ordinance approving change order number two with Donald Magai Incorporated for Highway Y Intersection Improvement Project number J5S3312.
A motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion. Michael makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Todd?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance.
Ordinance number three-nine-two-six, an ordinance approving change order number two with Donald Magai Incorporated for Highway Y Intersection Improvement Project Number J five S three-three-one-two.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter? Walter?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Michael?
Yes.
And Todd?
Yes.
Okay, four point five is a agreement with a fifty percent that they had not passed at the Transportation District. They had it in their minutes, I remember when they did it. But they never went back into the contract and this is the contract to amend that so they'll pay. So read it as a bill, please.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor, oh, sorry, bill number, bill number twenty-two dash one-one-six, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amended intergovernmental agreement with Interstate Plaza, North Town Village Transportation Development District.
Got a motion on the first reading?
Motion.
Michael makes a motion.
Second.
Glenn seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Clarification, ma'am. On paragraph six, on the amended intergovernmental agreement, it has the year, but it has no date.
I think Edna sent that to me.
I sent the minutes, yeah.
And I need to, I need to update it. It was actually in twenty-twenty-one that they did it.
It seems like in May.
So I'll get that date, I also need to change.
Says May eighteen twenty-twenty-one and exhibit A below that.
Okay. I will update the agreement for it, son.
So you're gonna clarify the motion that was made?
Ken, if you want.
It was in May.
Make that motion?
My motion that the date be placed in the blank.
Okay. Get a second. Glenn seconds. Call or roll.
Okay, Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Todd?
Yes.
Okay, read it as a bill, please. First reading.
That was the first reading?
No, that was an amendment to put the date in there.
Okay. Bill number twenty-two dash one-one-six, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amended intergovernmental agreement with Interstate Plaza, North Town Village Transportation Development District.
Okay, go back to a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Todd?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-two dash one-one-six, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amended intergovernmental agreement with Interstate Plaza, North Town Village Transportation Development District.
Got a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three-nine-two-seven, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amended intergovernmental agreement with Interstate Plaza, North Town Village Transportation Development District.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Okay, four point six is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of recycling bins from Bush Systems International?
Bush Systems International.
International.
I just had to read that also.
We received a grant to purchase these, a hundred percent grant. So it's a thousand bins we're out right now. The mayor today, I talked to him, we're gonna have them hot stamped. They're three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and if we buy those watery proof.
Stick 'em labels.
Oh.
Stick 'em labels, yes.
Stick 'em on there, they're six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, so we're gonna go with the hot stamp.
Cheaper.
I'll get a order tomorrow, y'all approve this.
Okay, go ahead, read this bill.
Bill number twenty-two dash one-one-seven, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of recycling bins from Bush Systems International.
Got a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Todd?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-two dash one-one-seven, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of recycling bins from Bush Systems International Inc.
Got a motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Todd?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three-nine-two-eight, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of recycling bins from Bush Systems International Inc.
Okay, got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Glenn makes a motion, Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Okay, four point seven is authorization to purchase four trucks from Ed Morse Ford. Steve, you wanna give us the rundown of why we gotta do this and how we're doing it?
Well, I guess everybody probably well knows the supply chain. If you don't get your order in now for government vehicles, then you have to wait till next October. That's the problem we're running in across the board, even with heavy trucks, pickup trucks, anything we buy, anything.
To get them at the government rate. Yeah.
A hundred thousand dollars a piece is the government rate?
No.
What we've done, what we did here, because we have to guess what everything is, what we did is we capped it at four-hundred thousand, we gave the mayor the right to spend up to that sum for these four vehicles. There's one three-quarter, one three-quarter ton and three one tons. One of the ton, one tons, however, is gonna be a little different because they're gonna put a snowplow on it. So what we've done here, because we don't, can't wait.
We can't get the invoices.
We gave him discretion to spend up to four-thousand, hundred thousand and allocate it between the vehicles as he sees fit, as he needs to do to get us to four vehicles. They're not gonna be consistent, particularly the one tons, because we're gonna put a snowplow on them. So we've gotta get in line here and we've gotta get in the queue now. So all we can do is say, here it is, go do it. And that's the only way we could figure out to do it because.
Yeah, it takes a year for them to come in. And when they come in, we'll have the invoices before then.
And the purchasing window opens on Monday, the twenty-fourth. And Mike Freeman, when he called me, he's on vacation for, until the twenty-fourth, so he just wanted to make sure we had all of our authorities in place so we could order our vehicles and get them.
Sir, now these trucks, are they being delegated strictly to Public Works or are they giving it up?
Yeah, these are all for.
Okay, I just.
We can't buy any trucks from Public Works this year.
Okay.
This is the first year, last year they didn't even order any through government systems.
Okay.
Ford didn't have them because they had to shorten.
Yes, sir.
So they just opened this up and they opened it a short window. And so we either get in there or we just wait another year until we try again.
Fair enough, thank you, sir.
Okay. We've never had to do this before. This is a first, so. Okay, read it as a bill.
Bill number two-two dash one-one-eight, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of four trucks from Ed Morse Ford.
Got a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Todd makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Glenn?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number two-two dash one-one-eight, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of four trucks from Ed Morse Ford.
Got a motion on the second reading. John makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three-nine-two-nine, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of four trucks from Ed Morse Ford.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Todd makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
I have a question. So we have four trucks we had to replace all at once, are we replacing trucks?
No, we didn't replace any trucks this year. We normally get two or three per year. We didn't buy any trucks for Public Works. Or cars, police cars, anything.
That was poor planning on somebody's part.
No, you can't order them.
You had to pay as many, as much as once.
Yeah, but you couldn't order them. They didn't have them. They didn't take the orders. They didn't get the discounts. That's why we're trying to get in this time.
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Glenn?
Yes.
Okay, four point eight, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreement with Willard. This is for Phoenix, which is very pleased with the ninety-eight thousand, because I was told it was two-seventy-five initially. And then they're gonna do Sawmill and Lenzman, two low areas on there, and fix Superior where the dump truck's been going in and out to do the landfill.
Can I please send to all of them sawmill, I don't think there was any more ones.
Oh, they're both on Sawmill?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. It's got Lenzman on it, but anyway.
Yeah, it got.
Read it as a bill, please.
Does it need to be changed before we?
No.
I just copied what it says on the, it says Sawmill and Lenzman hatching on the proposal. So I don't know.
Clarification.
Okay.
The two spots they were marked on Sawmill, so I don't know how the Lenzman thing came in.
Yeah.
That's.
So I wouldn't worry about it.
Usually, everybody that associates that neighborhood.
Just calls all Sawmill and Lenzman.
Okay. All right, ma'am.
Read it as a bill.
Bill number twenty-two dash one-one-nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with Willard Asphalt to repair Phoenix Avenue and Superior Sawmill and Lenzman Road. Lenzman Road.
Motion.
Got a motion?
Motion.
He'd like to second. He'd like to second that, too.
Yes.
Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Todd? Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yeah, but that, so that whole ninety-eight thousand is gonna go up here on this?
Phoenix.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna go on Phoenix, sorry. No, it's gonna go on Sawmill, right?
No.
That's gonna go on Phoenix.
Ninety-eight's on Phoenix.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's twenty-eight out on Superior and, I don't know, it's forty-eight or something.
Okay.
On Lenzman Sawmill.
All right. How come that wasn't typed in on here?
Yes.
And Glenn?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-two dash one-one-nine, an ordinance authorizing.
Just gonna patch those holes in two each other.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with Willard Asphalt to repair Phoenix Avenue and Superior Sawmill and Lenzman Roads.
Got a motion on the second reading. And Walter makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Glenn?
Yes.
Okay, read it as an ordinance.
Ordinance number three-nine-three-zero, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with Willard Asphalt to repair Phoenix Avenue and Superior Sawmill and Lenzman Roads.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Todd makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.[1303.24]
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Wage finance, we need a finance meeting. I don't want to have a-
Next month? There's, there's a lot of days next month.
You wanna have it after the next council meeting?
Yes, who's the chair? Todd, Todd, he's the chair.
Okay, we'll do it after the next council meeting.
Okay.
We need the budget approved and then go in December first, December third. Okay, public work, Steve, you got anything? Okay. Emergency services?
Steve's got nothing?
Not for committee yet?
Oh.
Yet.
We, we need to have a meeting with the fire chief.
Okay.
Chief, what day would be good?
Ah, tell me when. What, what do you got going on? What do you need, I guess?
How about the twenty-fifth of October? Is that good for you, chief?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-five October.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
What's that, emergency services?
You got something for that, or?
Yeah, it's, uh, I'll, we'll talk after.
Okay. Okay, park committee, they meet? They doing anything?
Gene was here today. They're getting ready for holiday in the park, so they need to have a meeting.
Veterans parade. Okay. Comments by Alderman. Start down here with Glenn. Let him go first.
I got nothing, sir.
Charles, nothing?
Yeah, I got, I got something. I'd like to thank mayor for signing a resolution for Master Sergeant Hilliard, who was one of the black soldiers that passed last week. He was one of the members of the last segregated units that were trained here on Fort Leonard Wood. He went to the Korean War and he served. And so I appreciate the mayor, what you did, and I'd like to thank Ms. Etina for sacrificing her time to get it done. Thank you. That's all I got, mayor.
Arthur Spruill passed away.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Arthur Spruill passed away. Fourteenth, funeral's this Friday.
Really?
At noon time now, at the station. Okay.
Me.
Uh, Linda? Hey, nice to meet you here. All right, what's up?
What can we do with the property on Cozy Acres? I know we sent them a letter and they sent us a letter, but all of that was supposed to, had, supposed to have a cutoff day at the end of January twenty-one, and it's still there. It's got broken glass in the window.
I need to go into clothes.
Oh, I asked before the meeting and it said didn't make any difference, okay.
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 Todd?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Walter?
It's always good to see the work being, the progress being done to the city, especially on Phoenix and, uh-
On your street?
Phoenix and Sawmill.
Of course, it'd be just great work and the workers are friendly around there and they, they offer a good service and, uh, it's just great to be a part of the city.
Michael?
No.
Really? John?
That's unusual. Since Michael's got nothing, neither do I.
Mayor, may I have one more shot, please?
Okay.
Is it Sarah? Is that your name? I'm sorry. Shauna, thanks for coming this evening and presenting that particular program because it shows that you really do care. Thank you for, for sharing it.
Okay. Comments by administration. Edna?
Okay, let's see. To begin with, I gave y'all the calendar that was sent, emailed to me today and represented the, uh, April fourth, twenty twenty-three general election. As you can see, the first date for signing will be on December the seventh.
What day?
December twenty-seventh.
Sign up general, wow, we did December was last year and now we're going way at the end, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be for a whole, I guess, month.
All the way into, well, no, it's in like two weeks. December twenty-seventh to January tenth. No, that's financial.
Well, that's the closing, is the closing is December the twenty-seventh.
Oh, okay.
But the data file will be December the seventh.
Oh, closing data filing for candidacy, December twenty-seventh. So it's probably the first Tuesday.
It is December the seventh.
Okay.
Starting, okay.
December seventh through, okay.
December the twenty-seventh, okay, for the, yeah, general election. Updated on the finances, uh, reported taxable sale, sales.
Who's running this year?
Um, it will be Dr. Slider.
Okay.
Uh, Alderman Hall, Alderman Reese, and Alderman Myers, right?
Moore.
Moore. Alderman Moore and the Honorable Mayor Lawrence.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. What's the budget stuff?
Uh, reported taxable sales here today is, um, two hundred and sixty million, seventy-seven, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, this is a ten, uh, point oh-eight percent increase over twenty-twenty-one, and in dollars, that is two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, more than we received last year. For the month of October, we had a slight decrease of about point four-four-five percent. That was about a thousand dollars decrease over last year, but year-to-date was still up.
On the user tax?
Right. The use tax, um, let's see, we collected this month twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that's the results of taxable sales of one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars of online sales that generated that amount of money. Uh, year-to-date collections is three hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Okay.
Uh, they-
Pays for a fire truck.
Yeah. Yeah. Balance in the operating account is two point five million. That's it.
Thank you. Cassandra, introduce Cassandra, who's our new HR person. Doing a great job already. Fired up.
Hello.
Three o'clock of interview didn't happen?
We'll try again tomorrow.
Cassandra has quite a bit of experience and some of you might already know her. Her dad is a fire chief at, um, Fort Leonard Wood.
Oh, yes.
Um, we've been over there and toured as a group before. He's an awesome tour guide, but, uh, she brings a lot of experience with her and we're excited to have her.
Got anything?
No, I can smell me all by work.
Okay. Okay, Mike, got anything?
Um, yeah, a couple things, chief. Just to give an update, our truck, our new truck, our previous truck got pushed back, uh, to this, no, I'm sorry, not December, November the fourteenth. Uh, so, obviously, there's some, uh, park delays amongst the shortages that we keep having with everything, as you know. Uh, I did have a firefighter recently, uh, he turned in his notice, uh, his last day is the twenty-first. He's linking up, uh, took him six months to do, but he's linking up with his wife who's stationed in Italy. Alex Hunter, uh, great hand, hate to see him go, but I understand, you know, he's going to meet up with his wife over there and be stationed over there. However, we, uh, with the help of HR, she's done a great job, got that out pretty quick, so I've got four potential good candidates to fill that spot pretty quick, I hope. Hope to start doing, conducting interviews next week on that, so. Um, real quick, just to touch base on the notification system that she presented, um, I, I think it looks good. Uh, we'll have to figure out who's pushing out what and delegate it out if you choose to go that route. Uh, I do know the city of Waynesville is, um, highly considering it down there and it probably wouldn't be bad if, if we did consider it here due to the fact of me coming in to be the fire chief of both cities. So, uh, it looks like a really good plan, um, but there again, if we could get that down, we'll have to figure out the logistics of who's gonna do what, uh, when it comes into that, so. But, uh, that's all I had. Any questions?
I have a question about that, that system that she talked about. So that's divided between five cities. What if two cities choose not to participate? That, does that up our amount that we have to pay?
What if, what if not all of them buy into it? Not everybody buys into it this past year?
So, there's different couple of thought processes on that, but my thought process is that the county would cover the, the part that the other city, whatever city didn't wanna pay for, the county would have to, um, consider covering that, um, and then that city would not have the access to it. Now, as a, if I push something out as a county, this people in the city would receive it, but, you know, if you chose not to go with it, then Chief Shepard here wouldn't have any sort of, um, admin rights to push out anything from the city individually, so that way the city, does that make sense?
So they'll still get the notifications, they just can't notify or send out anything on their own?
If the county sends something out, it would not be, there would not be personalized city notifications. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, and each individual's gotta sign up to get the notifications.
Yes, yeah, it's a subscriber base which the, uh, Hyper Reach, uh, highly supports and assists us in getting those subscribers.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it. Did you have a question?
I, I think she answered it because my question was in regards to pushing this, if this was a go, how would this be pushed out to the residents in, in county, citywide so that they're all notified and have that choice to make to, to, to join this?
Didn't we have some?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, Hyper Reach, they, they have, they, they've done this for multiple counties. They're of, they're a large, um, system. And so they will, they will help us do that, and so I've talked with other cities and, you know, we can put QR codes in, in certain bills and, uh, we'll post, push it on social media, things like that, just, um, if we need to do mailouts, you know, we will brainstorm, um, but Hyper Reach, they have, they have the, um, the system for, for helping us do that.
Okay.
The, the support.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, Steve?
Uh, there was a, um, a water leak in the police department that, um, actually sent some water down through the ceiling and damaged some of the drywall, security cameras, some of the lighting, uh, in the jail cells. Uh, that was a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we did contact Surf Pro, they, they came in, got it all dried out. Uh, so right now I'm waiting on a repair cost. I turned it into insurance, so I've been in contact with the insurance company. Waiting on a repair cost. I think a lot of it's just cosmetic, except for the, the cameras, they will have to be replaced. Water line or structural line? Water line. It was, uh, shark bite that fed and blew apart, yeah. So it, it isolated it to that area, which, thank goodness, all the jail cells have floor drains in them, so as the water went, it had a place to go. It wasn't over an office area. Uh, we did do some repairs on some, uh, wellhouses in Ridge Creek. Some of those was, uh, pretty bad shape and it takes so long to get the prefabbed wellhouses, so we just went and bought some lumber and, and kind of patched, um, quite a few of them to try to get them, get them weathered in for the winter. Uh, then we had a water main break on Alice Street on the first, uh, natural gas, uh, main break at the St. Robert's Self-Storeage on the fifth. And then another water make, main break this morning in front of Big Old Tires. Um, we was able to get that one repaired and patched back with asphalt. They was actually making asphalt today, so we was able to get that one patched, patched back. And thank, uh, the fire department for coming out and helping us clean up the parking lot there. They, they, uh, brought us some water to, to hose it down as we swept, so we got it fairly clean. And then well seven on Superior Road, it started to pump a little dingy last, uh, week. We did pump that to waste for a couple hours, it cleared right up. And it seemed like it happened right after we had that heavy rain, so that's kind of, you know, that, that well had a lot of caverns, uh, in it when they drilled it, so, um, it's been so dry. I think we, I'd done a blowdown test on that while I was out there and I'm, I'm believing it was two hundred and twenty foot of water above the well, um, above the, the pump head. So, we're, we're still setting pretty good there. Um, we have to worry when we get under, under a hundred foot over the wellhead, so, so we're still doing good. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Uh, is the city sweeper working?
Yeah.
Uh, Lenzman and Sawmill needs to be swept. There's a lot of rocks, uh, really down on Lenzman and Sawmill, down in that little, uh, ravine right there.
Oh, at the very bottom of the hill?
Very bottom, and it's really gravel up, so when the trucks come across, they're gonna, you know, throw projectiles.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's a water leak. I know that's, uh, public district two, but it's a water leak right there at Lenzman and Sawmill, right at that little curve where the bushes are.
Did anybody call it in?
Uh, I'm not sure. That's why I was just passing it on to you.
Oh, okay.
But that's, that's, thanks, man.
I'll make note, call them if they, they've got a leak there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Ray?
A few things. Uh, the tonnage report for October third to the eighteenth is, uh, two thousand five hundred and ten tons, averaging, uh, two hundred and nine tons a day. Um-
Two forty-six yesterday.
Yeah.
And you got ninety on the floor today.
Um, October eighth, we had a, uh, electronic and appliance collection in tires. Uh, we collected, uh, three point seven one tons of electronics and appliances, and on tires, we did two point six tons of tires. We had, uh, about two hundred tires we collected. Um, over spring, fall cleanup of St. Roberts was pretty light this year. We probably did three or four tons extra, and that was it on both days. Uh, Waynesville, it was a little heavier, but, uh, it still ran pretty light. Um, we're going to get our, one of our new trailers that finally got done, uh, we're gonna go pick it up tomorrow, and that's all I got.
Mike?
Thank you, Ray.
Tyce?
Um, we have a gentleman, uh, has a company, he's already on some of our One Water Tower, wants to attach, uh, some internet to our poles. We get some benefits. Um, we, he has a contract with St. James in a similar manner. His contract with them is quite adequate, the way it's written. I had Steve come over, he took it to our electrical people to make sure the contract provisions don't interfere with our operations. It does not. Uh, we'll have that contract for you at the next, uh, meeting. Uh, I have a couple of short things for, uh, close. That's all I got.
Okay. Anita?
I have a few things. The city's birthday was Saturday. It was our seventy-first. We put a flyer on Facebook. Shopped with the cop. Uh, Cooley came to see me today. Uh, they're gonna start, uh, putting out the, uh, collection containers. He's excited and out promoting it. If y'all have somewhere you can put flyers or whatever you could do, he said he would appreciate it. Told him I pass it out tonight, so this is his kickoff, um, event today. Um, the Growth Alliance has a job fair on the twenty-seventh. The city of St. Robert and, uh, the Growth Alliance partnered, and we also partnered with the state of Missouri. So far, we have sixteen, uh, companies signed up, so we're excited about that. We're hoping to catch the foot traffic from the post office and the VA or whatever, you know, traffic wouldn't pull in. Uh, the state's, uh, promoted it heavily, so that's a good thing. Hopefully, uh, people needing jobs and businesses needing people, it'll hook up. We were approved for the soul source on the treatment plant for the vibro-optics from Sematema. Y'all approved that tonight. Recycle bins were ordered. We've had several weekly meetings on Y Highway and the treatment plant. Um, I sent out the new drone video. Everybody should've got that. It was pretty neat and there's actually, like you can tell, things are starting to look like something. We all talked about that, um, here. Our tap grant, uh, after reviewing it, it looked with Jeff, we're gonna have to do a full R F Q on engineering, so we'll get started on that. The dog park, we had a report through one of the Alderman that we had, uh, potential aparvo, so I got ahold of Fort Leonard Wood's, uh, veterinarian service because they have a kennel like ours and they deal with it a lot, and I talked to the Richland Vet about it and they told us that we had to flush the whole thing three times and let it dry between each flushing. I got ahold of Mike and they went up in the big truck ladder and they flooded it. Uh, then after that, we have to spray it three times. We bought some, uh, chemicals to do that and it'll probably open up maybe the middle to the end of November. Uh, we've still gotta spray one more time, let it dry, and then it does live in the ground for nine to ten more years. Uh, I had asked Steve to make us a new sign because, uh, they suggested on posts that we had no puppies under four months old and that all dogs had to have their vaccinations and boosters on our sign. We didn't have that, so Steve is fixing that sign for us. We'll get it up. Uh, trick or treating for St. Robert is October the thirty-first from five to eight. Mark posted a flyer today. That's what we have always done in the past. Holiday in the Park is Linda's event every year.
December the fourth.
It's the first Sunday of December. Um, we provide free soup and a bottle of water, a water and pitcher with Santa and a treat. We have coloring tables and vendors. It's just a fun time and it'll be the first time after, uh, COVID that we've gotten together and done something like this.
It follows the Christmas parade in Waynesville. They have the parade in Waynesville and then we have the holiday in the park.
Maybe you're gonna talk about the airport.
Well, today is the first day Contour is flying. Went to Dallas and, uh, Nashville today.
You didn't fly?
Nope. Uh, but Contour is back and, uh, should be up and running. Everything's, uh, it was very smooth transition from SkyWest to them, so. Ken? Mr. Wallace, if you'll introduce your speeches.
Absolutely. You've got M. Dick and Lily, they're both from Waynesville High School, and thank you forever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Veterans Parade, I'm not gonna be available to come on the eleventh. Uh, would somebody like to do that? We've got some candy to throw, and then, uh, there's a short speech. Reggie's not here, he's from here from town, but anybody interested?
What?
Okay. John said he'd do it.
I'll throw candy, but not a speech. John, you wanna go?
Charles said he'd do it, too. I'd do it, I don't care.
Okay.
Okay.
He's gonna do it. Mr. Moore?
Second over.
He's got a coin.
Mayor Hummington, yeah.
Yeah, we got this thing up out of here, you can write it.
Okay, we'll work out for big house here.
Charles, you can do the opening remarks and you can do the closing ones, tell that.
I don't want none of them.
Need somebody to drive, mayor?
Okay, the next regular Board of Alderman meeting will be number, November eighth at five P M. Get a motion to go into closed session. We have a meeting that's being closed pursuant to Missouri law, chapter six, ten, dash, oh, two, one, to group, section one legal, section two real estate, and section three personal. And she makes a motion. Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Uh, the Historic Preservation Committee is going to have a little ceremony prior to the, to the parade that day also.
Okay.
And yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Oh, and I forgot something here. Tyce, uh, did we get the payments from the ambulance district on nine-one-one on that? The payments, the lawsuit on nine-one-one and the ambulance district. Did we get all those payments?
We got all the payments that were due on the lawsuit.
Yeah.
I sent the invoice out.
We have not seen the secondary payments yet, so we may have to come again.
Fire chiefs?
They have not paid the, the, they're not being current, are they?
I always bill them at the end of the year.
Huh?
I bill them.
Are they paying?
Yes.
So they're current?
Yeah, they'll, they pay that.
Okay, so, yeah, we got all our payments.
It was brought up in our board meetings. I had to answer my question.
Okay. And we're now in closed session, so we can transition. Appreciate those who wanna eat.